Okay, following the meeting to order at 6:08 of the Southwick Collin Grandville Regional School Committee. Apologize for being a few minutes late. We had some technical difficulty here. As a reminder for public comment, if you have a public comment to make this evening, you have two opportunities in the agenda. Get your public comment in. Please send an email with your name and address to superintendent@stgrsd.org. Okay, in your secretaries, in your packets, you should have a secretary's report dated December 1st, 2020. Intertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes.
So moved.
A second.
Anybody have any questions or comments or changes they'd like to make to the report? Okay, hearing none, we will do a roll call vote to accept the secretary's report. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kenya?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700. Warrant articles, Amy sent out an email earlier today with the latest warrant articles. When you have a moment, please review them, sign them, and return them at your earliest convenience. For correspondence this evening?
Hi, thank you Chairman Hall. I just wanted to update the community on the MCAS. Grade 11 was going to be taking the MCAS in the month of January. Through the Commissioner's weekly update, he has notified us that grade 11, class of 2022, will no longer participate in testing during the January, February window. Testing for this class in English Language Arts and Mathematics is being postponed until later in the year. And the other thing you need to know is that the access testing, which is usually a very short window, they've now expanded the window for access testing from the beginning of January until almost the end of May. So they haven't said that grade 11 is not taking the MCAS in ELA in mathematics. They're simply saying that they, at this time, have postponed it until later in the school year. So I want to make everybody aware of that. The other piece of correspondence I have, at the beginning of November, the Commissioner asked us to complete a student learning time survey. You know, time on learning is a requirement that we are expected to meet 900 hours at the elementary level and 990 at the high school level. And we had to put in, submit a survey based on grades one, grades four, grade seven, and grade 10 on what our instructional time looks like this year. And DSE, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, looked at everybody's survey, and they reported whether your status, whether you were clear or cleared, or you needed to make some adjustments or improvements. This is to let Southwick Collin Grandville School Committee and our community know that we were cleared and that our plan that we submitted to the state does meet student learning time requirements. I also want to let you know that we did receive four emails that did not follow the proper information for public comment. There were four emails that appears to be from students who are in support of the hockey season and strongly encouraging the school committee to vote for winter sports. If they have an opportunity to hear this, if they can provide their name and their address with their email, it may be read during the second public comment. And Steve, I'm going to pass it over to you for the E and D update.
All right, thank you Superintendent Willard. So on Friday, an email was sent out by Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, regarding our excess and deficiency account certification. E and D is, as you, as most of you know, is akin to municipal government free cash. So regional school districts are limited to 5% of the ensuing year's budget. So the balance in our E and D account, our free cash at June 30th of 2020, has to be 5% or less than our FY21 operating budget. And we are below the limit. We're at 3.5% of the FY21 budget. It was certified at $998,000, just under $1 million. That's 70% of the maximum allowed per the statute E and D. So it puts us in a reasonably good position to continue to offset assessments to the member towns through the operating budget. So these funds could be used in the development of the FY22 operating budget. I would just lastly add that for FY21, the current fiscal year that we're operating in, we utilized then for this district an unprecedented $800,000 in E and D. The norm for us, something that would be more typical, would be in the $500,000 range. So if you were to add an additional $300,000 from the current allocated E and D that we're using in FY21, to this amount, we would be just about at the maximum allowed. So a little bit of a wrinkle in the numbers this year necessitated by adding additional money to eliminate discretionary assessments to the member towns in response to the financial concerns around the pandemic. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. At this time, it's time for our first public comment. I'm going to ask Amy to check the superintendent email address and read any public comments that we may have.
Okay, Chairman Hall, I have a few public comments. The first one is from Evan Iglesias, Southwick, Massachusetts. He says to the superintendent and school committee, "As one of the seniors and captain on my team this year, I will make sure we follow and that we are all willing to follow the rules placed by MIAA and any additional rules that the school chooses to add on. I'm asking for you to all look at this more in depth and open-minded than with fall sports. This is many of our last years to get the high school sports experience and to get our names out there." Thank you, Evan Iglesias. The next public comment is from Desiree Phillips, Southwick, Massachusetts. She says, "Good evening. I have to say that as a parent who has children in the district, I don't think that the decision to go back to in-person learning was wise, and you should have stayed full remote until after Christmas break. Now the poor kiddos that attend Powder Mill are yet again going back to full remote just after being in person for two days. It's not fair to the staff or the children to have to pivot so often and so quickly. It is confusing for everyone to keep switching schedules, different remote groups, et cetera. There are far too many changes occurring, and as an adult, I have trouble keeping track of what's going on. My children were excited to be back, but they are going to experience another disappointment after they find out they need to stay home again. None of this is fair, and I suggest that these decisions to go back and forth based on the MOA data should be given more thought in situations like this past weekend. How many times are you going to expect the staff and kids to do this? Come back to school for a day or two, and then, just kidding, you have to go back to full remote. It's more difficult for them to pivot all the time than it is for them to just stay home until things settle down. Our cases as a county, town, and district are at their highest and will continue to get worse after each break and holiday. Why is it safe to attempt to go back at all now, but it wasn't safe to be in school back in March when it was just starting? Keep everyone home until cases decrease significantly. Thank you." And there's one additional public comment from Robert Stevenson, Southwick, Massachusetts. "Good evening, school board members. There are currently two vital issues that you are involved in that the members of our communities are watching very closely: deciding on district participation for winter sports and when our children will be able to return to school. I urge you on both topics to make your decisions based on facts instead of making these decisions based on fears or worries. With respect to the decision being made tonight concerning winter sports, there are so many additional facts that you were presented with by the A.D. at the last meeting. There have not been any significant transmission issues during the fall sports season in our area due to students playing sports. MIAA has created sport modifications for each allowed sport, and the A.D. has created a plan to implement all these recommendations. All the superintendent's fears that were presented to you in fall have not come true. You are also aware that if our communities are in the red, then sports will be put on hold. I am disappointed that when you had the opportunity at the last meeting to ask Principal Trammell directly whether he supported the children in his school to participate in this winter session, none of you took advantage of this at all. With all of this additional information, this decision should be very easy for you this time. The facts strongly support, and the state of Massachusetts has recommended that these sports are safe to play if the recommendations are followed. Even the majority of teachers in our districts believe that the A.D. can safely implement these protocols. Let them play. Concerning when our children can go back to in-person school, here are the facts that are now public knowledge nationally. And en masse, children have been shown not to be a high-risk level for contracting COVID in school, and there have not been any significant issues with teachers contracting COVID from the students. Even our own data that the superintendent has been sharing supports these findings. The major challenge that we are facing is that the communication that we have received from the superintendent on this topic over the last couple of months has been far less than ideal. She has failed to inform us of vital information contained in the first MOA until the last minute, failed to clarify how she will be making her decisions to return our children to school in the new MOA. She informed us last week that both Woodland and Powder Mill have no teachers or students with COVID, but did not clarify why only one group of children at Powder Mill could return to class and not the others. Last week, we also received conflicting information about when the regional school students could go back to school. Now today, she refers to the MOA again without any detail. That is because there was a positive case. The children at Powder Mill need to go back to remote learning with less than 24-hour notice. How is less than 24-hour notice remotely reasonable for parents to adjust their schedules? The MOA clearly states that at least 24/8 hours notice needs to be provided to the teachers before switching between learning models. Why the discrepancy? How is this even possible based on the MOA? This has been an extremely frustrating process, and this needs to be addressed immediately. Someone on this board needs to hold her accountable for the conflicting messages and lack of detail that she is providing. She reports to you. Chairman Hall, you are part of the Safety Committee. If the superintendent is refusing to release this information, then you should. There should be no reason not to inform parents of the communities that you have been elected to serve, what the criteria is that will be used to allow our children to return to school. You have stated before that you have felt that the committee has been transparent throughout this process. You need to start living up to that statement. Thank you. And that concludes the first public comment session for the evening.
Thank you, Amy. Moving on to Student Advisory Report.
The report for tonight is that the SRS GSA Club T-shirt fundraiser is still going on, and the order form is available on the school website. Seniors helping seniors will be implemented within the upcoming week. In total, there's 26 participating students, and then we are helping 14 senior citizens. There's a possible storm on Thursday, so students will help with snow removal. This week at SRS, it's Spirit Week, and there's been a good amount of participation. Tomorrow's Dress Up Day, Thursday's Snow Sculpture Contest, and Friday's Ugly Slutter Day. And all of this information is posted on the SRS weekly calendar on the school website. Reefs Across America donated 92 reefs with the $1,380 that they raised. The reef will be laid this Saturday at the Veteran Cemetery in Agawam. With help from the National Honor Society, Student Council, and Students Against Destructive Decisions, holiday cards were sent to the Holyoke Soldiers' Home. For students, progress reports are coming out Friday. Coco on the Go-Go is happening tomorrow at SRS from 12:30 to 2:00. Students are welcome to come and drive up to receive hot chocolate. There's not much of an update for the winter play, but it will probably be some type of reading like the fall. As Superintendent Willard said previously, MCAS is postponed for juniors into the spring, and then a few seniors will still need to take it in January. The Esports Rocket League placed third for their regular season with 14 participating students. And that concludes the Student Advisory Report.
Thank you very much for your report. Moving on to Educational Presentations. Tonight, Mr. Trammell is going to be presenting the Southwick Regional School Site Strategic Plan.
Good evening. Thank you for having me on tonight. The Site Strategic Plan, I'm going to take the first objective, engaging, engaged learning, and break it into three groups of two. The first two focus on and expanded it to culturally responsive instruction. The staff has participated in a book read over the first semester.
Hey, Joe, I don't know if everybody else is having trouble, but you're kind of going in and out.
Yeah, your audio is tough.
Yeah, I can't hear you either, Joe.
Oh, man, I'm at school tonight, too.
That's better.
Yeah, that was much better.
That was better?
Yes.
All right. So I'll start, I'll start over.
Thank you.
With the first objective, engaged learning, I'm going to break it down into three groups of two. The first one, the first group focusing around the culturally responsive instruction. We've taken our UDL training, which is the intentional design for all learners, and expanded it to include culturally responsive instruction. Our staff has participated in a book read and discussion, and this is culminating with professional development from the Western Mass Writing Project that is Teaching for Racial Justice. The topics will include identity, culture, and pedagogy. The second set of initiatives within this objective is really around dynamic teaching. This is looking at the hybrid and remote models. We're really looking for remote instruction more seamlessly with a wider variety of audio and visual experiences, promoting greater student engagement. We've utilized the first few days of school to focus around the virtual classroom, including technology skills and apps to support engagement with the content being presented. We've had Mike Flynn and Ben Taglary work around the dynamic teaching and strategies that teachers can use in the classroom each and every day. And the last two initiatives in this first objective is around social-emotional learning. We've worked with Alice Hertzberg from Levine Associates in creating tier-one instructions, or tier-one interventions, and our counselors going into the classrooms, working with our teachers on what those tier-one interventions can be, and really getting to the root of the issues for our students, with our students, early on and often in the classroom. Was that better? Could you hear me clearer there?
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, all right. So moving on to the next objective, shared educational leadership. It's really taking all that we are doing in that first objective with all the engaged learning and the professional development around hybrid and remote learning strategies, our social-emotional learning, tiered-one interventions, and our dynamic teaching strategies and working together. One of the positives that has absolutely come out of the remote learning and the COVID-19 impact on schooling is the collegiality within our building. Teachers are working harder than ever before, but they're working together and collaborating more than ever before. And the schedule, the calendar that Superintendent Willard has put in place, and the consistency around that, leaving every Wednesday afternoon for teachers to work together and collaborate, is allowing for our teachers at the regional school to really engage in shared educational leadership. So that would be the one that, obviously, we have the routines and the procedures around COVID-19 and the pandemic that we're constantly implementing when we're in school. I mentioned the tier-one systems of support that our counselors are doing. But really, that last one, I know it's the shortest one, they encourage teachers to model best practices for their colleagues. We are seeing that being done each and every day. Teachers are doing an outstanding job of working together and sharing what's working and what's not working on a daily basis. The third objective there, the assessment for learning and transfer, there's two initiatives. One is around just-in-time teaching. And really, just-in-time teaching is identifying the priority standards and the prerequisite standards and the proximity to it. It's taking out the fluff. It's taking out all the fluff that sometimes we do in our lessons to deepen the understanding, and it's really getting to the root of what the lesson is, what the standard is. And then the second one is the iReady assessment. Superintendent Willard very much wanted the Southwick Regional School to have more hard data that we can look at to measure the growth of our students. We've implemented the iReady diagnostic in November. We're doing our second one in January, all grades seven through 12. We had about a 90% participation rate in the first go-around. We were very, very pleased with that. So we're looking forward to implementing that again in January, and then looking at the data, understanding the data, and building off of that. And then the last objective there is a guaranteed viable curriculum. That has been a constant of SRS for the last few years and did not change much in that category going into this year. But all that I've talked about and the other three objectives are going to be part of continuing to ensure a viable curriculum moving forward. Any questions?
I have one. This is Chelsea. I had a question on, so we talked about tier-one intervention strategies and the counselors. What goals, what intervention goals kind of are being targeted through that MTSS?
Well, the goal is the tiered-one instruction, the tiered-one intervention. So we've had great success with our middle school counselor, working with our middle school teams. And we've seen a significant drop in references to our SAT, our Student Assistance Team, at the secondary level. So by getting, by meeting with the teachers early and often, we are targeting the strategies for the students at the classroom level. And we're equipped the teachers with more strategies to handle it in the classroom rather than at the next level. So we're hoping that getting our high school counselors, meeting with our high school teachers every two weeks, starting the second semester, will see benefits at the high school level as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I figured that you were talking about social-emotional goals or kind of things that have to do with behavior and things like that. But I didn't know if it branched out to anything math or reading-related at this level.
No, this is not content-related. This is behaviorally related, and this is fostering good, strong, healthy relationships with our students, which is more important than ever right now.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Any other questions for Principal Trammell? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Principal Trammell, for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Moving on to policies. Tonight, we have a third and final reading for three policies. We'll start with BEDH. Anybody have any final comments or changes they would like to make to this policy?
I do have a thought, because even one of our comments today was over three minutes long, but it was being read. So I'm just, that was one of the, that was one of the things that were specifically delineated here in bullet number two. Nope, not bullet number two. Sorry, I lost where I was.
Number four.
Number four, thank you. Three minutes to present their material, but of course, I mean, if it goes over, that's up to the chairperson, but what was I thinking? Not exceeding 15 minutes. I was just trying to think of, make sure that all of the things that kind of would help keep the meeting moving and keep it going were included. This is one of the most important day-to-day things that we're going to do, I guess, for just day-to-day for this meeting. Ted, were you going to add anything in?
No.
Oh, okay, I just heard you.
I think you bring up a valid point. I think, just me speaking personally, we have been a little bit more flexible when it comes to public comment because we are doing remote meetings. I guess the example that comes to mind, when we have a hot topic where there's multiple emails about the same topic of support, typically, if we were meeting in person, it'd be very easy to say, okay, I need one person to step up and address the committee representing everybody, to sort of be mindful of the time. And when we're doing it remotely, that's a little harder to accomplish through the email process. I guess that'd be my only feedback on that.
Yes, I wanted to add something, too. Prior to when we started meeting remotely, we always did hold public comment, and also, we always still received emails. But I don't believe that we read the emails that we received out loud in public comment. Am I correct about that?
That's correct.
And so I understand what we're doing now during the pandemic, and I don't think it's a bad practice for, you know, people to hear these comments. But I do feel that, you know, when we go back to in-person meetings, we need to make a decision about how we handle emails.
That's a good valid point.
Maybe, so maybe that's, maybe that comes up in correspondence and any policy related to correspondence separately.
That's a good idea.
I don't know. Of course, it takes to the third reading to really think about these things, but that's why there's three.
Any other comments on this final reading? Okay, we're going to move on to IKF, which is graduation requirements. Any final questions, comments, concerns, thoughts?
Can I just verify what has changed since the original draft went out? Am I correct that it is the asterisks regarding PE that has been clarified?
Yeah, the alternative physical education course, yeah, that asterisk was kind of the biggest change. I think, biggest and only?
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted to verify that.
Any other questions? Any other questions on this one? Okay, last up is GCG for substitute teacher employment. Any final thoughts or questions on this policy?
I did hear in other districts, there's not even the ability for um. Long-term subs to have a one occurrence of a sicker emergency absence. So it kind of gives us a little bit of an advantage for sure. Um. I'm looking at the bold long-term sub area. A lot of times, teachers will sign up for a long-term sub and get about nineteen days in and somehow catch. Catch something from a kid and then come to school sick because they don't want to get to that twentieth day. So I think it's important to have that. In there. But. No questions.
Okay, we will be voting on these three readings or three policies tonight. Which is a great segue to the next section, uh moving on to the action items.
Good evening, uh School Committee and Chairman Hall. Uh tonight, we're taking the all-important vote on winter athletics. And um before I make my recommendation, I just wanna uh just preface it a little bit. When we were talking about fall athletics. Uh we were talking about opening school in the middle of a pandemic. Um and it was. At that time, Southwick um had very limited or few cases of covid. It was very important to all of us, uh teachers, administrators. Uh. The importance was the health and the safety of all of our students and staff. When the recommendation was made for fall sports. Um there wasn't any guarantees that we wouldn't be playing communities that were in the red. Uh we didn't know how it was going to spread. Uh and we had to keep our focus on keeping our school doors open for as long as possible. If we did a really good job uh keeping them open, uh they were open. Much greater than communities around us, some of which have yet to even open. Um so when I listened to Athletic Director Santrigrin's uh report last week, I want to commend him. I think he did a great job. Um he really listened to the requests of the school committee and put together a very thorough. Uh presentation which addressed a lot of the health and safety measures that I am very concerned with. Um it's easy to criticize what about decisions uh somebody makes when um the decision does lie with you and any decision that makes. Um does come back and I'm the one who has to shoulder that responsibility and it is a great responsibility and one I do not take lightly. So as I move on to winter athletics. I am going to move to approve the Southwick Regional School participation in winter athletics for the twenty twenty-one season. With the accommodations as presented by the athletic director, which includes adherence to all PVIAC. And MIAA guidelines related to the covid nineteen protocols, including individual sport modifications. There will be no practice or competition if Southwick, Tollander, Granville is red on the state metrics. Or Southwick Regional School is in full remote learning status. And there will be no competitions with any towns where the opponent town is red on the state metrics. Uh with this in place, I can say to you that I do recommend moving ahead with winter.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Looking for somebody to move the motion?
I think I'm, I did.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions uh? On this? Motion?
Hi, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Uh we also have the AD as well as Principal Tramell on on the call if you have any questions specific to the regional school. Opening the floor to discussion.
So, go go ahead, Chelsea.
I'm from at the bit. Um so this is Chelsea and I'm wondering um in just, I'm I'm excited to hear um. This motion on the floor and I'm wondering specifically about no practice. If Southwick, Tollander, Granville is in red on the state metrics. Um and thinking about those instances potentially where. Southwick, Tollander, Granville could have been red. Um but still in session because the other two, um because there is no other um issue with the MOA and. That kind of two of the three. Um circumstances we've been looking at. But why do we have these at night? So, yeah, so. I'm just thinking about. Could it potentially be still safe to practice if we're in the red, but the other, the two out of three metrics aren't met? So those are my thoughts, questions.
So Chelsea, are you asking? I'm not sure what you're asking. Are you asking that? Um. Would there be any other circumstances in which there would not be practices or competitions, or are you asking? That is being in the red, the only requirement for this not to happen?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking that I was kind of clear that that the idea of competing with other districts when we're in the red is definitely. Um a no-go that we should not be, but if we are. If Southwick is in the red, but yet the other metrics aren't met for us to to be remote. Could we still be practicing amongst ourselves? Does that make sense? Is, did I say it right yet? Third time's the charm.
So I will let Dave handle this because we took this off of his presentation. Um that if Southwick was in the red, then we would not have any uh sports. So I will pass this over to uh Athletic Director Santrigrin.
So the the present, the presentation that I made a couple of weeks ago indicated that if Southwick was. Were to go fully remote due to being in the red. Which would mean that it would, it would meet all of those criteria that that Chelsea's talking about. Uh then we would shut sports down. So obviously, we could, we could tighten that, we could, then we could restrict that even further. But my proposal was fully remote due to being in the red, which would, which would mean that all of that criteria has been met. Um so in in that case. Um. Chelsea, to your point, if if we're just in the red, but none of the other criteria is met and the students are engaged in fully in hybrid learning and and everything's going. Uh my my proposal was that sports would continue at that point. Uh but at the point where we as a district go go to remote learning due to being in the red, then we would shut down athletics as well.
And the um PVIAC, I believe, standards say that if you are in the red, you can't compete. Just in the red, we can't compete, correct? For the MIAA, sorry, I might be getting that the mixed, but if we're in the red, we shouldn't be playing any sports or competitions, right?
I believe it was left to the individual communities um. Department of Health, I know in the fall, uh Holyoke, for example. Was in the red for a good portion of the fall season, but they. Were not restricted from competing until they had three weeks in the red. So they had to meet that specific criteria to. To shut them, to shut down their teams. So that um that's left up to the individual districts, um but. Being just, just one week being in the red um was not an automatic criteria for shutting things down. There was, there was more to it.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. I thought I knew what I was. Which which part I knew I was talking about. Okay.
So I guess there there's a little bit of confusion here about when there would be practices or competitions and when there would not. Um so the AD's presentation indicated that there would not be. Uh winter sports if the district was fully remote. At what point in time? You know, like, I mean, do, we're fully remote now. For the regional school. So does that mean that because we're fully remote now at the regional school? And we're taking the vote now, that that's when it counts? Or does it count like when the season begins, which is in January? Or does it uh go into effect halfway through the season if we were to go fully remote then? So that's kind of my first question. And then my second point is that that is um a little bit different than the wording of this. Um. Action item that we are approving because that simply states being in the red. Um as the criteria, period. Um and so I guess I I need to be a hundred percent sure what I'm voting on and I think we need to be a hundred percent sure about what. Would allow participation and what would not.
So to clarify one question, yes, we are red now, but if in the middle of January, when the season is supposed to start. Pam, if we were in the yellow and we were back in school. Then we would be able to play sport. Because just be, it would be what we are at the current time. So say. In January, we are still in the red and we're still in a remote learning status, then we wouldn't be able to play sports. Uh come February first, we move into a yellow. Um we would be able to start up practices and start playing. So it's kind of like when people say, when is school going to reopen? I really don't know the answer to that. I can see the parameters that we're working with. I can see the metrics that we look at um as the safety committee that can tell you that. I can't give you a date until the metrics say a certain thing. So as long as we are in a remote status because we are red, then uh. I agree with Dave, we should not be having practices or any sort of competition. We are not, if we are in red. And we're re closed due to remote learn, for remote learn.
So does the language here mean or infer that we are in remote, in a remote status, not just red, but in a remote status?
Yes.
The intention? Okay, that's where my.
Red on the same metrics. Or I, oh, so yeah, it should say, and, sorry, I was, I I hear, I see what you're saying. So there's no practice or competition. If Southwick, Tollander, Granville is red on the state metrics and if Southwick Regional School isn't a full remote learning.
Okay.
That's, it's the word or, yes, you're completely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So it would be replacing that word or with and?
Yes.
Okay, um now, could you clarify another thing for me?
Yeah.
So there will be no competitions with any towns where the opponent town is red.
Yeah.
So. And and that is a decision that we make, that is not, that is not a um something that's written into MIAA, correct?
Correct, that was um in um Athletic Director Santrigrin's presentation. But right now, Westfield is in a red status. Um they are red, yet they are still in person.
Okay. Um now, let's say that. Um. January comes and let's say that. Um we're still red, then February comes and we're yellow. And so we go from a seven-week season to a potential five-week season. Um but then um we're two weeks into it and we go red again. Um obviously, the, that data comes out on a Thursday evening. Um so my question is, let's say that, you know.
Lost you, Pam.
Were you able to hear me? I lost my connection for a little while.
No, we lost you.
Lost you.
All right, so if if we start as yellow, then we go red. Um that 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 information comes out on a Thursday evening. Um so when would there be? If the information comes out on a Thursday evening, then the no practice or no competition goes into effect when and lasts for how long?
I will turn that over to Athletic Director Santrigrin.
All right, well, from our, from our standpoint, from the district standpoint, if it's us that's going in the red. Um at the point where we go fully remote, then the decision is is made. Uh kind of at the same time. So.
Here's my concern, though. Let's say the the um. L- let's say that the metrics come out on a Thursday evening and let's say that there are competitions. Scheduled for either Friday or Monday, but, or excuse me, Friday or over the weekend. But the school district's decision is not to pivot to remote until the following Monday. I guess that's where my question lies.
Uh, well, I mean, I'm, I'm open to whatever works for the district, but but my, my recommendation there would be that when the. The district makes that decision, that's when athletics would be shut down at the same time. We could do it sooner if if that's what, you know, we're asked to do.
So I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with knowing that we're in a red um percentage. Um on a Thursday evening and then knowing that students could be then practicing or competing on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday.
Oh, Pam, this is Joe. Then then you you can, that that's something that the school committee and Superintendent Willard can. Can set that if if. We find out that information on Thursday, then if you want it to go into place immediately Friday morning. Then then that's fine. That's something that the school would would um. Fall in line with. I, you know, Dave and all the other athletic directors in the PVIAC are very much aware that schools will be canceling games. Um the night before, the day of, an hour before kids get on the bus, so. Um, that's, that, that's something that that if if you felt comfortable. Uh having in place in order to vote positive for it and in favor of athletics and and that's something that that myself and Dave would. Make sure is followed.
I can do that. And I understand that, you know, I also understand from the educational perspective. That, you know, if the data comes out on a Thursday, but we don't pivot until the following Monday because we want to give that forty-eight hours of notice. I understand that as well, but I feel that there's a difference between um, you know. Pivoting in a school scenario where um. There's greater control over. Six feet and and direct contact and things like that versus. Practices and competitions. And and I guess that that's where my comfort level lies.
Yeah, I I mean, I think, I don't want to speak for for Dave or or Superintendent Willard here, but. You know, Pam, I think the vote tonight is to allow. Uh sports to have the opportunity to to move forward with potentially practicing and being involved in in games. Uh it's a seven-week season. The 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 winter season was was actually voted uh to push, be pushed back another week. So I think the start date is January eleventh now instead of the fourth. Um it's only a seven-week season and at any point in time that. Superintendent Willard of the school committee feels that that Southwick, Tolland, Granville. Regional School District is not in a safe or healthy position to participate, then then we can stop at at no. No penalty, no fine, no, no consequences other than. Um we're, we're either stopping completely or we're um, we're pausing. Athletic activities for a time that you feel comfortable.
Yeah, and and that did happen around the PVIAC in the fall. There were districts that had to, that had to just hit the pause button for two weeks at a time. Postponed a couple of games. Some of them made those games up later, some did not. Um so the precedent's already been there and the athletic directors are aware that that's the reality that we're living in.
I also wonder um if thinking about our MOA with the teachers' union. Um and thinking about how the superintendent has the, the. Um it's her job to kind of look and evaluate the special programs and the reach of um. The in, the infection, the reach of um the circles and and um. What am I saying? Um but if it's not affecting the athletics, so may, then. Or if it's not, wow, um, maybe that's not up to us to decide, at least especially tonight.
Chelsea, I can tell you that last year, um at the beginning of the pandemic, uh Principal Tramell and I had to make a very difficult decision. Um at, without knowing what was going on or what was happening to, one was to cancel the Pops concert. And now it sounds like. Uh an easy no-brainer now, when this was just beginning. Uh that was a very difficult decision and something that we. Discussed back and forth and weighed all the options on. discussed back and forth and weighed all the options on. And then we also had to cancel our, for our trip last year to Spain. Those are really difficult decisions and ones that we've worked together by looking at what was in the best interest for our students' safety. And I'm sure we can continue to work together collaboratively in regards to sports as well.
I guess to Pam and Chelsea's point, if, if we think there's going to be issues with the way this is worded, we do have the opportunity tonight as a committee to modify the motion. I think I guess my comment to Chelsea's original thought was centered around practice and our, any one of our towns being in red, but us being in a hybrid model. You know, I think we all agreed at the beginning of the fall season that we were okay with folks practicing. So do we want to be this specific here and rule that out? Or do we want to reword this so that it's just focusing on competition with other areas? And then to Pam's point, do we reword it so that it's to the to the decision of the superintendent whether we're going to compete when there's a transition of the district to fully remote? It's completely up to this committee tonight. We can, we can reword this. We want to table it and reword it for the next committee meeting. We can vote on it as is. So have some dialogue and try to work through this.
I want to apologize for my fried remote teacher brain. I think I've used up enough airtime. My concern was solved with the or and. And I think that I definitely have a lot of faith in Superintendent Willard's and Principal Tremell's decision-making process if we were to transition to remote. That's my opinion.
My to remove, oh, sorry clocks.
Go ahead, Pam.
I've got all kinds of clocks chiming in the background. My, my preference would be to remove the entire section about the, whether the regional school is in fully remote status or not, and leave it completely contingent on being in the red. Unless there's a situation in which the regional school is fully remote, but we are not in the red. And is that an option? Is that, is, is that a possibility?
Are, are you asking that? Is it a possibility for us to be not in the red, remote, and still participate?
Well, either way, is it, is it a possibility for us to be not in the red, but still be learning remotely?
Yes, we could have a cluster outbreak.
Okay. So that's why that or was in there in the first place. Am I correct?
If, maybe I should say and or, yeah, because there is the possibility that Southwick Regional School could be for, for remote learning status and Southwick would not be in red or Talon or Granville.
So, yes.
The majority of our cases that we're getting are coming from Southwick Regional School. As far as the COVID-19 positive, positive cases, which is why they're not open right now. The trends and patterns show that, that there, that we'll probably be the last of our three schools to reopen due to the number of students who are still testing positive for COVID-19. And or maybe? Maybe and or?
Yeah.
If Southwick Regional School.
And also to Jeff's point about, you know, taking the practice component out of it. I say absolutely not, because when we were considering that back in the fall, our cases, caseload was much, much lower. We didn't, we weren't in the red. We were green at that point in time. So I, I feel very strongly that the practice component needs to be in here. You know, it's just getting worse and health professionals are saying it will get worse for the next few months before it gets better. So I would leave that.
This is John. I, I don't think there's any rush on us voting on this. I mean, I think we have the general idea that, that we're going to be okay with this. I think it would make more sense to get it reworded and get it all clear and, and then proceed from there. I, I don't know how everybody else feels.
Well, John, just, just from a planning standpoint, I, I need to open up registrations if, if we're going to allow for it. And I also need to allow, let the conference PVIAC know whether we intend to, or not for scheduling purposes. So, and that, and that, again, that's not a, a full commitment, but you know, just as a broad planning planning purposes, we're, we're kind of getting down to it. We're, we're about four weeks out from when the season would begin, five weeks or so from the first, first games, so.
Yeah, Amelia, Amelia Park's been very patient with us as well, too, holding ice time and stuff, too. So there's that component with a financial component with the ice time. That's, that's a little time sensitive with this.
Okay. So, I mean, all good to, good to know.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I do think that there's room in the wording to allow for, you know, Superintendent Willard, Principal Tremell, the school committee to just make a decision in, in the moment based on the, the, the data that's available at that time. And we can kind of give it, give it a more broad broad strokes, I guess, with, with the, the language, but allow for a decision to be made in the moment based on what's, what's happening in, in the moment, because that's nope, nope, nobody knows what the future holds, but we need that flexibility to be able to say, no, we're going to shut things down based on what's happening. So.
And, and Dave, just to add on to that, I, I can't remember what sport it was, but I know bizarre winter storm came through at an odd time and we had sent must have been, I think maybe the girls' basketball team, and they were going about an hour and a half away. And they had been on the bus for a half hour, and I believe I called Principal Tremell, and I said, I'm just not comfortable with this. I need them to turn around. And at that time and place, we are able to make in the moment decisions and what we feel is in the safe, best interest of our students. So we have done that in the past. I, I don't think the language needs to be included in there. Just know that we will make decisions based on the best information that we have at the time.
And it's not like we can't add an addendum to this or something in a couple of weeks. I mean, that's obviously possible, right? If we wanted to make some sort of tweak to it.
Yeah, of course we could.
Yeah.
Can we, should we go into a Word document? Can we edit and, and wrap it up or? Oh, yeah.
Looks like after modifications, we need to come up with a simpler sentence that I think that the decision to the decision to participate in practicing competition will be at the discretion of the AD, Principal Tremell, and Superintendent Willard. Based on cases in our community or the communities we're playing. I'm just suggesting this. I'm welcoming any input from the committee.
That was a good
Mal or Superintendent Willard or AD Santigrin.
This is Maria. I think that, that, that decision-making should be put in here. That way we are out of the equation. Because we do not make those decisions as a school committee. So maybe those in place, the principal of the school, the AD, and the superintendent should be, you know, indicated in this in this document.
And after a few months of decision-making and watching our leaders make decisions, I feel like we can feel comfortable in that process and removing that with you, Maria.
Absolutely.
How many members need to vote in favor of this for this to pass?
This would be a simple majority, I believe.
And is it a weighted majority? Like?
It could be depending on how close we are.
Okay.
David Hall, can I make a, a recommendation that in the second line, accommodations is, is actually modifications?
Any other comments, thoughts, or input to this action item? Okay, so the first thing we need to do is all entertain a motion to modify the action item as we've just modified right here. So doing.
So moved.
I second.
Any questions or thoughts on the word changes that we've made in this motion? Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote, and we're only voting on the, the language changes to the motion. So Pam, you're first.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted. Ted, you're on mute. Come back to Ted. John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Jeff is a yes. Ted?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to modify the language in the motion passes 700. So we're going to go back to moving the action item. I'm going to have the superintendent read it in its new version.
Okay, move to approve Southwick Regional School participation in winter athletics for the 2021 season with modifications as presented by the athletic director, which includes adherence to all PVIAC and MIAA guidelines related to COVID-19 protocols, including individual sports modifications. There will be no competitions with any towns where the opponent town is red on the state metrics. The decision to participate in practicing competition will be at the discretion of the superintendent in collaboration with the Southwick Regional School Principal and Athletic Director. Recommended.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, any questions? Comments? Final concerns? Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote. I'm going to start with Pam.
Under the decision, the last sentence.
Say that again?
Do we need to add back in that there will be no season if we are fully remotely? Or is that assumed in the last sentence?
That's covered by the last sentence.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote on this action. Pam's up first.
No.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 610. Okay, moving on to next action item.
Move to approve the Woodland School Site Strategic Plan for the 2021 school, 2020, 2021 school year. Recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Questions on this action item? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam, that's
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700.
Move to approve the Powdermill School Site Strategic Plan for the 2020, 2021 school year. Recommended.
So moved.
A second.
Any questions on the Powdermill Site Strategic Plan action item? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700.
Move to approve an unpaid leave of absence for paraprofessional Lauren Cole period December 7, 2020 through August 24th, 2021. Recommended.
So moved.
A second.
Any questions on this motion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700.
Move to accept the revised policy BEDH, public participation at school committee meetings. Recommended.
So moved.
A second.
Any questions on accepting policy BEDH? I guess my only comment is we will continue to be as flexible as we can in this arena with with remote meetings. Okay, Pam, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam's up first.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700.
Move to accept the revised policy IKF graduation requirements. Recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this motion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam.
Yes.
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 John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700.
Move to accept the revised policy GCG substitute teacher employment. Recommended.
So moved.
Second.
So moved. Second.
Final questions or concerns on this motion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jeff is a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero. Okay, moving on to reports. Superintendent Willard, you're up first.
Hi, thank you, Chairman Hula. I just have a few things I'd just like to share tonight. One of them is I was sadly sent home a letter that where we had to close Powdermill School due to a student in the C cohort testing positive for COVID-19. That student was never in Powdermill School this week, so nobody was put at risk and there were no close contacts. But it was the first student to test positive at Powdermill in about two weeks. I know we had no students last week and we were hoping to make it through this week with nobody testing positive. The good news is we still have Woodland School open. I was at both schools yesterday when the doors opened and the kids came back in and I can tell you there was excitement, there was skipping, and that was just the teachers. So it was great to see the kids back. The teachers were thrilled to have the kids back and my core value and my core belief is that nothing takes the place of in-person learning. Even those two days for those students who were able to come to school at Powdermill can't be replicated any other way. So I just wanna thank the community for being understanding and patient as we do everything we can to keep our school doors open. I say it all in my correspondence, it is going to take all of us to do that. The good news is for the past three weeks, the COVID numbers, COVID-19 cases have been going down. So the trend is we are moving down in Southwick. I believe we were at a high at about 68 and we were at about 44 last week for the town of Southwick. So we're definitely going in the right direction, but we still have a distance to go to get the yellow. We have to have 25 cases over a two-week period. So we definitely have some work to do and it's going to take all of us to get there. The other thing I want to share is there's been a lot of questions about what snow days are going to look like this year. There is projected to be quite the storm coming in Wednesday night into Thursday. Currently, we are still going forward with good old-fashioned snow days. So if we do call a snow day, it is not a remote learning day, it is a snow day. Students nor, nor, teachers nor students need to report to work or to get on their computer if they are home. It is a regular snow day. If we do have a two-hour delay, currently Woodland School is the only school that it has in-person learning. So they would follow a typical two-hour delay arrival and dismissal time and the other two schools would be following two-hour delay remote schedule that will be sent home by the individual schools. So a snow day is a regular snow day and if we have to call a two-hour delay, do you have a two-hour delay remote schedule and Woodland would be the only one affected by an in-person two-hour delay? And that is what I have for you today.
Okay, next, the Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Presnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to update the committee a little bit on some of the coronavirus-related expenditures that we've incurred and some of the grant funding that's been made available to us and something we're pursuing with our member towns. To date, the district has been the recipient of just over $554,000 in coronavirus relief-type funding. That's comprised of four different grants. The C B R F or Coronavirus Relief Fund, $246,000 and change. The S S E R grant, $220,000. The R L T E, Remote Learning Technology, grant, $83,000 and then a small $4,400 grant that was just released by DESI Nutrition, School Nutrition, to help districts with some additional expenses that might have been incurred in the delivery of meals dating all the way back to the springtime. So those grants totaling $554,615. All those funds, virtually all of those funds are committed at this time. They have differing end dates. The C B R F grant is ending on December 30th, as is the R L T E grant and the C B R F Food Service Grant or School Nutrition Grant. The S S R grant is running through June 30th and that grant has been used for personnel responses, so new positions or allowing us to meet the demands of the remote learning and in-person social distancing requirements. With all that said, the district to date still has another nearly $107,000 in coronavirus-related expenditures that have been paid for out of the district's general fund. And there's been an ongoing dialogue between initiative, was initiated by the Town of Southwick Select Board, but between the Select Board and the district. It has since expanded out to the other, the other two towns about the concept of accessing some of the coronavirus, coronavirus relief funds municipal program. So there's a C B R F municipal program, also expiring the end of, end of December, that all towns in the Commonwealth were provided with and the amount to which they needed those funds varies from community to community based on the impact of COVID-19 in those communities. The Department of Secondary, Elementary and Secondary Education, affectionately known by us all as DESI, has been promoting the idea of school districts reaching out to their municipalities. So in the case of Regional School District to the, the, in some cases, several other cases, it could be as many as a dozen different communities to see about the possibility of accessing those funds for coronavirus-related, qualifying coronavirus-related expenditures that the school district might have incurred. So in keeping with that suggestion by DESI and the overtures that were initiated by the Southwick Select Board, we have pursued that, that avenue and last night Superintendent Willard and I presented to the Select Board in Southwick. We talked to them about what we were spending that money on, our ability to provide them with documentation of those expenditures and with the hope that they would support basically making us a sub-grantee where they would be able to transfer funds to us. We're seeking the, some additional guidance from the Administration and Finance at the state level who's administering the C B R F municipal program. But the Select Board voted last night to support our efforts here and with the ideal arrangement that each town would pay its pro-rata share based on the assessment ratios, in which case Southwick would pay 84.43%, Talon 3.29% and Granville 2.28%. So so that, that was great news. The, the Committee, the Select Board wholeheartedly supported that and then we're now working with Southwick Town officials to make this a reality and get some relief of the impact of, that this, these expenditures had on our FY21 operating budget. This morning I also heard from Matt Streeter, who is the Town Administrator for the Town of Granville. We've made similar requests to Granville and Talon and Matt explained that the Granville Select Board discussed the matter at their meeting last night and were supportive of, of the concept. So we're working also with the Town of Granville now to hopefully get a commitment from, from that town for their pro-rata share of the nearly $107,000 in COVID-related expenditures that are currently have been funded from our operating budget. This is helpful because any savings in our operating budget in order to our excess and deficiency account, the excess and deficiency account can then be used to offset assessments to the three-member towns. So it's kind of a win-win for the district and, and for the member towns and it's leveraging these federal funds to their, to their greatest, greatest potential. These are funds that the towns would not otherwise be, be using for their own endeavors. So it's only the excess money that the towns were not able to use for their own needs that we're, we're talking about accessing. I wanted to get you guys up to, up to speed on that and that things are, are moving along in a good, positive direction and great cooperation and, and assistance from, from the towns on this issue.
Steve, I just wanted to verify that L P V E C has reached out to you about their costs associated with their students regarding P P E and how our, our contributions for the students that we send to that district.
I, okay, up to this point, Pam, I've only heard that as kind of a rumor or that, that there may be some outreach on the part of L P V E C. I've yet to, unless, unless Superintendent Willard has received something recently, I, I don't have anything, anything official from them on, on that request.
I don't either, Mr. Presnell. It did come up at one of our LPVAC meetings, not yet today, but a month ago, that they were potentially looking to offset some of their P P E costs because they did not have access to the same grants as we did. I haven't heard anything since then.
Yes, that came up in my meeting a month ago and I was told that you had been informed of that, but I have another meeting tomorrow, so I will verify. But I do think that that should be on your, your table.
Right.
And that that is going to happen.
Right. Thank you for, for putting that on the radar screen. We do have, we're, I think we have a meeting scheduled with the collaborative member district school business officials next Tuesday.
Okay. Yes, this will probably
May come up at that, at that meeting. You know, kind of on a positive note, it seems like they're starting to make some headway with some federal relief that would flow down to the states and, and local government. So I also know that the, I read something this week that the revenue projections for the Commonwealth are higher than anticipated and that we might be able to expect a supplemental budget, state budget in FY21. And I don't, I have no idea what the governor and the legislature might put forth as how that money could be spent, but maybe there's a chance that there'll be some additional funds coming our way to help with any additional coronavirus relief needs that we have. Bear in mind that, that these expenditures I'm talking about, these are all things that happened back in August and September and October to prepare us for students being back in school. This got us a first round of P P E and some, some cleaning supplies and so forth. So to the extent that we're, we're back in school on an in-person basis for, you know, any significant amount of time after the holidays, we will be needing to place additional orders and hopefully there's some, some additional funding that, that's available because mo- most of the money that I talked about early in this, this little segment, that's expiring as of the end of December. So there'd basically be no, no new grant funds available to us until there's some, some action taken by the federal government passing it down to the states or a supplemental-type budget that, that maybe the Commonwealth passes. Any other questions on, on this issue? Okay, I think that's, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Steve, and I just want to publicly thank the Board of Selectment of Southwick for initiating this and entertaining and approving our request. Okay, moving on to the next section, subcommittees and liaisons. You folks have dates set for our next negotiations?
I don't think that there's, I, I think the, with the Paris stuff being also, I don't know if there's something else coming up after that.
Sounds like 2021.
Yeah. I know we were supposed to have more meetings with them, but we, we solved what we needed to solve in the last meeting, so.
Okay. Flying at Subcommittee Meeting, we ended up canceling it. We'll follow our regular, our next regular scheduled meeting in January. Pam, do you have, have you met with L P V E C since our last meeting?
No, my, my meeting is tomorrow.
You haven't met either. The policy, do you have any updates? All right, hearing none. I didn't have a Buildings and Grounds meeting yet. Get something scheduled in January, Steve. Any other liaison position like to report out?
Southwick 250 is releasing its Southwick Revisited book and can be ordered by emailing Jim Putnam. But if you check out the Facebook and I think soon I'll have the website updated. It'll have the information on how, how to do that specifically. And there's a Light Up Southwick is back on thanks to another volunteer, Christine Greco, joining in and getting it done kind of in a flash. So the maps are up and you can check out all that Southwick has to offer as far as lights.
Your updates? Okay, we're gonna move on to our second public comment.
Okay, Chairman Hula, I do, I have one comment from one of the students that had commented earlier and he did respond, Nathan Doherty from Southwick, Massachusetts. His comment was, "We are willing to listen and follow all the rules and guidelines that the M I A A and school put into place for the hockey season." And that concludes public comment for this evening.
Okay, moving on to committee discussion. Anybody have any old business? Anybody have any new business?
Can I have a question for Superintendent Willard? So I know parents have asked me this and I guess power, powermill parents are wondering if the student who is COVID-positive is not in the building, why did they still need to go remote? I'm assuming it's because we're in the red and that also the county is still also above our 5%.
Right. When we put the M O A in place, the language was specifically if it was, the school would open and there would be a student in, either in-person or hybrid. This student was an in-person student. So while technically they were not in the school, per the M O A language, we needed to honor the language. The expectation would be that we'd be in school for two weeks and one of them, one of the students would have gotten positive. That wasn't the case, but as you know with M O A language, once it's written a certain way, you, you have to honor and respect the language. So although the student was never in the building, the student is an in-person student and so therefore we So although the student was never in the building, the student is an in-person student and so therefore we respected the language of the. MOA, especially considering that it was an exception to the main school closure and. You do. You want to make sure that you're being careful to follow that because the school should be closed except for this one criteria. And we did meet that criteria.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to thank everybody for their hard work in 2020. I know this has been a trying year. For the district, the teachers, parents and the students. I, I think we all said it at the very beginning, we're all in this together from all aspects of the school district and it's a very true statement. If anybody else has anything to add for tonight, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I just want to give a shout out to all those teachers out there. You guys are doing an amazing, amazing job in. So thank you all. I heard that Ted. So, so moved.
Seriously, thank you everyone. At schools and at home, thank you guys. I second the motion.
And Chelsea and Pam, as teachers out there, even though you're on our school committee, you are teachers in other communities. I thank you. I know how hard this is for teachers and I know how much extra work they're putting in to teach remotely. Right now and to step up and be on school committee as well. And it seems like an undone, undone task right now and I appreciate your commitment to help us find Granville Regional School Committee.
When is our next meeting, guys?
January 5th.
Okeydoke, so have a happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
We need to do a roll call vote.
I know, well, just before we do it, go.
Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Thank you very much, folks. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Night.
Happy holidays, everybody.